All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Let's have a moment of silence, please. And the flag salute. Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Callagwire.
I'm here.
Mr. Darmo.
Here.
Mr. Dovi. Mr. Cameron Jenkins.
Please.
Mr. Phil Jenkins.
Here.
Ms. Karen Minugian.
Here.
Mr. Ziwak. Mr. Ziwak.
Here. Here.
Gotcha. Mr. McGloughlin.
I'm here.
Here.
I'm.
Ms. Tersich Keely.
Here.
We have a call.
Wonderful, thank you. May we please have the reading of statement of adequate notice.
Public notice, this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act should be given as follows. By advertising the Burlington County Times and the Courier-Post on July 7, 2021. By sending a notice to the Burlington County Times and the Courier-Post on July 7, 2021. Posting notice on school bulletin boards at main entrances on July 7, 2021. Posting the notice electronically on the district website on July 7, 2021. My following written notice of the clerk of Delanco Township on July 7, 2021.
Okay, thank you. I request a motion for the approval of the updated minutes of June 23, 2021. Regular meeting and executive session, please.
Second.
Okay, that was Bob with the motion and Phil with the second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
I abstain. This is Vince.
Thank you. Motion carries. I'm requesting a motion to accept the reports of Secretary and Treasurer for the June 2021, which are in agreement.
So moved.
Thank you, Bob.
Second.
Thank you, Cameron. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Darmo abstains.
Thank you. Motion carries. Community liaison report. There is none. I welcome everybody to our meeting this evening. We hope to make this quick, seamless, and painless. And as we move forward, we're going to move to public comment on agenda items only, please. I don't see anyone with their hands up. So now close the public comment aspect. Superintendent's report, Mr. Mersinger.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Cameron Minugian. Superintendent's report, a motion is requested to approve the following. Superintendent's report, Exhibit D, motion is requested.
Don't move. Second.
Thank you. Bob had the motion and Phil seconded that. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Instruction and program committee report. I make the motion to approve the following line items. Establishment of the K-2 self-contained multiple disabilities class at M. Joan Pearson Elementary School for 2021, 2022, and all their applicable school years. B. Submission to the New Jersey DOE required request to establish a special education program to the Burlington County Office of Education. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Phil. Questions or comments, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries, thank you. Finance committee report, Mr. Litwack.
Yes, I'm once again with low bandwidth. So if I remember, it's A to C. Am I correct?
You are correct.
And, okay, because it's now something, my connection's unstable. So anyway, I'd like to move that we accept A to C as appears on the agenda.
Thank you. May we have a second?
All second.
Thank you, Cameron. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I believe this is roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's my mistake. Roll call vote, thank you, Phil.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I was meaning.
That's okay.
Mr. Callagwire.
I vote no.
Do you vote no? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes, no. I mean, no, no is my answer.
Ms. Darmo.
Abstain letters A and B, yes for letter C.
Mr. Dovi.
Yes.
Mr. Cameron Jenkins.
Yes.
Mr. Phil Jenkins.
Yes.
Ms. Karen Minugian.
Yes.
Mr. Ziwak.
Yes.
Mr. McGloughlin.
Yes.
Ms. Tersich Keely.
Yes.
Question passes.
Thank you. Operations and Facilities Committee report, Mr. Callagwire.
There's nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Policy committee report, Ms. Darmo.
Report at this time.
Thank you. Personnel committee report, Mr. C. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following of A through G with special recognition to D. Resignation of Casey Noble, Walnut Street Middle School Principal, effective July 30, 21. The resignation of Angela Carousela, part-time school counselor, effective July 30, 21. The hiring of John Karakashian as the principal of M. Joan Pearson Elementary School at an annual salary of $106,000 to be prorated for a start date of July 26, 21, for the 2021-2022 school year. And G. The hiring of Barry Sade as the principal of Walnut Street Middle School at an annual salary of $115,000 to be prorated for a start date of July 26, 21, for the annual 21-22 school year. I will make the motion.
All right, we'll second.
Thank you, Phil. This also is a roll call vote, please.
Is.
I'm sorry.
Is there any discussion?
Phil was second.
Thank you.
Yes, that was Phil for the second, and now we're requesting a roll call vote, please.
Questions or comments, Marissa?
Oh, my bad.
Yes.
Questions or comments, that's my fault, so sorry.
Discussion or comment.
Ms. Darmo has a comment on the hiring of the Walnut Street Middle School principal. Because the original contract for Walnut principal also included the duty of superintendent. That was the contract, the last contract that was reviewed by the Executive County Superintendent. Alterations in that which separated out the two positions were never reviewed by the Executive County Superintendent. I've been directed by the New Jersey School Ethics Commission to seek assistance from the Executive County Superintendent. And if I so choose to ask for assistance from the Office of Controversies and Disputes about this issue. So I'll be voting no on G and yes on the other items.
Just.
Roll call.
I'd like to. If I could comment.
Oh, yes, please.
So first and foremost, I would like to indicate, though, that Ms. Darmo is incorrect. That there does not exist a contract that states anything about the superintendent and Walnut Street Middle School principal. I also would like to state that I've already spoken with the county about this topic. The county confirmed what I have shared with the board previously about this. But we will receive some kind of official notification based on what Ms. Darmo is indicating about the questions that she had. But I do want to emphasize that there is no existing contract that indicates that the Walnut Street Middle School principal is part of this superintendent contract. In fact, the CSA contract is specifically for superintendent slash principal, but it does not indicate Walnut. It's important to emphasize that. Another thing that I wanted to state, though, is that these two gentlemen that we have here at the meeting tonight, as you can see, we have John Karakashian and Barry Sade. I just wanted to take a moment to welcome them to the district. Welcome back for John, who grew up in Delanco, and welcome to Delanco also for Barry. So these two gentlemen, through the interview process, I just want to make the board and the public aware. We had 77 resumes. Those resumes were bundled down into 20 candidates that received interviews with a committee of 12 individuals that included parents and staff. And then of those 20, we funneled it down further to a top six where we had another round of interviews that included a parent rep, a staff rep, and two board members and myself. And these two gentlemen kept rising to the top. So it was, ultimately, all the candidates did a fantastic job, but these two, as I said, rose to the top. Absolute best candidates for the job for Pearson and Walnut, respectively. So I have 100% confidence that they'll do a fantastic job. So John and Barry, welcome to Delanco.
I'd like to say something, Marissa.
Yes, please.
All right, John and Barry, welcome to our school board meetings, and I'm sure you'll find them very interesting. Yeah.
It's a pleasure to be here. Honestly, and I'm sure I can speak for John as well. We're just excited to get started.
And I want to thank the board and say hi to Barry officially and everybody else. I can't tell you how excited I am to be coming home to the school I attended as an elementary school student. And Joan Pearson was actually my principal, so this is just a full circle. It's a dream come true for me. So I just want to thank you so much for the opportunity to come home and to lead in this wonderful district and give back to the district that gave me so much.
Thank you.
I'd like to express my, I guess, optimism of how the process was carried out. I just think that Marissa and Joe and Cameron need to be commended for the efforts they put in. I think Cameron's been, between here and Riverside, really learning a lot about personnel and hiring and seeing a lot of candidates come through. So I was glad because I think Phil, Marissa, and I can, knowing where we started seven, eight years ago to now, to get to this point, has been exceptional. It's been, you know, that this is like, okay, deep breath, and now we go back out dealing with, we have to deal with post-COVID. So I think everyone has done, you know, an excellent job. I know neither of these gentlemen, but from how they appear on paper, I don't know how we even found them. I didn't know these kind of people existed that would fit what we need here now in Delanco. And I'm glad that we were able to find them, welcome aboard, and we have to move forward with hope and with a new vision, and let's get things done that we have to get done. So I think we're just going to have to work harder. And the board's going to have to work harder to support the efforts of the principals, the superintendent, our new BA. I mean, I look at it, okay, it's a fresh opportunity to move forward and continue to move forward. So thank everyone, and welcome aboard Barry and John. And let's all be the best we can do in staying in our adults and communicating clearly and being effective. So thank you. Thank you, all the folks that were involved with the process, parents, staff, teachers. This is a community selecting. It wasn't Mr. Mersinger. Mr. Mersinger could have just selected someone. He didn't. He put it out. He made it as public as he could. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Marissa, want to say something?
Yes, please.
Um, I looked at both the resumes of these gentlemen, he's finally qualified, but my vote will be no tonight. And the reason that is, is I have trouble, I thought about this a long time, being a parent who has kids in this school, about the process we went through this. I don't. I have some doubts on that, but more importantly, where I have my main problem is that we have a school with no activities and no sports, and we're hiring more people, we're making raises, doing all these things, but yet my children, the children here in the school are missing out on basic things that you could get at, as I said before, in inner cities, because I deal with them all the time in my other job. So it's disappointing that we've come to this point. And we have, we're going to have two executive positions. I, like I said, just based on that point, that we're cutting out all these things at the school. I can't move forward on this, and I think a lot of people in town feel the same way. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince.
I'd just like to welcome John Barry to Delanco and looking forward to their optimism and energy to be able to work on the things that absolutely need work. And that's educating our children and getting their test scores back where we need them to be. So welcome aboard and best of luck to you.
Thank you. There's no further comments or questions. We will move this to the roll call vote.
Mr. Callagwire.
I vote no.
Ms. Darmo.
I was going to vote yes on item F for the Pearson School principal, but since Mr. Mersinger clarified that the superintendent slash principal contract did not specify the principal being for Walnut Street. I'll have to change my vote and A through E, yes, F and G, no.
Yes.
Mr. Cameron Jenkins.
Yes.
Mr. Phil Jenkins.
Yes.
Ms. Karen Minugian.
Yes.
Mr. Ziwak.
Yes.
Mr. McGloughlin.
I'll vote no on G and yes on the rest.
On Ms. Tersich Keely.
I'll vote yes.
Question passes.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. Welcome aboard, gentlemen. We look forward to working with you.
Welcome.
Okay, moving forward, there are no board liaison reports, and I will move this forward to old business discussion, committee of the whole.
Didn't we discuss this the last meeting?
Now we're going more in depth.
Further discussions, gentlemen.
Going deeper.
There's something I would like to share, if I may, and this is for all the board members. I just became aware, and I think it's other districts may have had the same situation. But, you know, the trainings that you do, you could, like, any, a first-year board member, if they wanted to do all the trainings in one year, they tend to become better educated. And it was pointed out that, you know, the fourth one is the fiscal, financial. That at least that's what I heard at the last board, you know, county, state board meeting, was that, in other words, you didn't just have to take the one each year. You can advance yourself. It's an educational training system, the School Boards Association, the way it's set up. So there's nothing from stopping you, other than yourself, from getting further training as how the School Board Association works and what is, what we can and can't do under those guidelines and that aegis of their, you know, how we're chartered. We're from the School Boards Association. So I think that maybe for some of the newer board members who haven't gone through all the trainings yet, you can jump ahead if that financial is, you know, what you want to do. And every year, legal is updated for anyone as well. You're free to take that. So that may help in the education of our school board.
Thanks, Harry. Thank you, Harry. Thank you, Harry.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So we, at our last meeting, we requested that Mr. Mersinger reach out to other districts to gain their feedback on the Committee of the Whole directive, to see how or if they too were following a similar layout and format. And if so, how were they handling the situation? So I'll allow Mr. Mersinger to speak on that research that he's done thus far.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Karen Minugian. So what I did was, I reached out to about, I would say about 150 colleagues. I would have to count all the names on the distribution list, but many, many colleagues to find out how they operate as a board, and specifically if it's a committee of the whole. Because we have done smaller committees, and we've seen that in action. So I received responses from a few people talking about how they move forward with committee of the whole. So what I'd like to do is just share the responses I received, so the board is aware of the different formats that are given. Now, I didn't receive many responses. I could be receiving more over time. But committee of a whole is actually a fairly rare format for boards to take on. So it's just something that I wouldn't expect to hear back from every district. So I heard back from one district where it says, where the superintendent said, we have a committee of a whole. Here's how it works. I meet with the board president in advance of the meeting, usually just for an hour or two. We review the agenda, discuss items, and highlight items of concern. Then the board gets the agenda the Thursday prior to the meeting, and then the BA and Board of Education will, or sorry, sorry, the BA and Board of Education president will answer any questions related to items. So it's, that is a very simple way to set it up. It's, okay, we'll have a committee of the whole. Marissa and I will discuss things. Stephen will be involved as well. But I don't think that that's what our board is looking for. Our board is looking for a lot more involvement from the whole board, not just the superintendent, president, and BA. So that idea, although it might work somewhere, just doesn't sound like it will work as much in Delanco. So one person just very candidly said that that committee of the whole does make the process longer. They said that they established a new policy that would provide structure to the committee. And then it said that the attorney would review that policy as well. Says, we discussed every topic in public, except for those which were confidential. The full board discussed every topic. And then this person said, though, that the board eventually decided to go back to the smaller committees after running a committee of the whole for a while. So that's one where it sounds more like what we're looking for, where we want to have some guidelines within a policy, have it reviewed by our solicitor, and then move forward with a committee of the whole where the full board is involved in discussion of topics. And anything that's confidential is done in executive. So that sounds very similar to what we're looking for. We had another one respond and say, again, make sure that you put details in your policy. You would have work session meetings in which you review the agenda. You would also have an executive session for confidential items. We also have board members ask many questions during that first work session, but then during the next session for the regular meeting, it is fewer questions. So again, that sounds similar to what we're looking at, is we want to have a clear policy with guidelines. Committee of the whole that discusses every topic, executive session for confidential. But then the next week, we would have an agenda that typically is not going to require a lot of discussion because all of that discussion happened the week before. Let's see, and then got another one here. Says that we operate as a committee of the whole. We have agenda items for discussion submitted prior to the meeting. It says, we also have separate committee meetings for human resources as well as operations. So they're actually running more of a hybrid, where they have a committee of the whole and then smaller committees for other things. But no matter what, I mean, that's, those are the only responses I've received so far. And I also received other responses from many colleagues who simply just said, we do not operate as a committee of the whole. Sorry, I can't help. But no matter what, I feel like the overarching theme is, you know, what do we want to include in that policy as part of what the procedure is for committee of the whole? And have that work session where discussions happen, have the regular session where voting is taking place. That sounds like the basic thing that we want to do. It's just a question of what do those policies look like? So now that I've heard back from some people, I want to be able to ask them, who do you share that policy with me so we can see the details of your policy? I also wanted to put, Amy, I don't want to put you on the spot, but Amy, do you have any, do you have any morsels of enlightenment that you can share with us when it comes to this topic?
It has been my experience just with the clients I work with, and just, I don't know if the board is aware, I was actually a school board member myself for a number of years, that the two meeting a month process, what you're looking at, is, it worked. It was the type of meeting that I participated in as a board member, not as a solicitor. We had a work session the week prior to a voting session. But we also operated in individual committees, and we let individual committees do the bulk of the work. You get more done with individual committees reporting out at work sessions. I think that's just logistically better, but that's clearly not the path they're going down. Most of my clients do do individual committees. The, I have heard of a few boards that do committee of the whole, where every matter is brought up and discussed in a work session before a voting session. It is possible. It just makes your meetings a lot longer. But if you're willing to put in the time, it can be an effective way to make sure all board members are on the same page.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that, go ahead, Steve. Go ahead, Steve.
Sure. And I'll also thank you, Joe, for your good efforts on this and doing all that research. I really appreciate that, reaching out to your network. So what you described from the, what you heard back from a few of your colleagues, Joe sounds about right to me. I think that having two meetings per month during the work session and then a more streamlined meeting would be ideal. And then having everything, I think the one, I think really, I'm not sure what committees we might want to spin off. Maybe negotiating, just because that wouldn't be public anyway, because it's all personnel. But other than that, I don't see why, and, you know, since operations, it's not that big of a project, so I don't see why. Might as well just add that to the committee of the whole as well. So I'm in favor of switching to a full committee of the whole.
Thank you.
I think we have to understand that we are free to create what works for us. So I kind of envision it as going to committee of the whole and then forming the policy and figuring out how we can best work where efforts need to be to then move back, you know, the commit, however we decide, it's nothing, there's nothing set in stone. We create what works best. And what is Amy's last name? I know the last, because it just says Amy. I don't know.
Yes, I'm sorry. My name is Amy Guerin. I'm an attorney at Parker Mc. Yes, Guerin.
No, I knew that, but do you E R I N?
Correct.
Okay, no, because you're saying, Amy, you know, I knew that you were from Parker McKay, but it just, once again, this week it just says Amy up there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would like to make a comment on committee of the whole. I still support it. Although I did hear, I think Mr. Mersinger said that there would not be a lot of discussion at public meetings because a lot of the discussion already happens at work meetings. If the work meetings are open to the public, I think that's, that's not a problem. But if the work meetings are close to the public, then the public won't get to hear our reasons for why we do things, which is why discussion in a public forum is good. For example, Delanco stopped giving free meals. We are not distributing free meals anymore, unlike some other schools. We are not distributing free meals anymore, um, unlike some other school districts. And the public isn't really aware of the reasons for that. So that's something where if we do things as a committee of the whole, sometimes I believe we do need to engage with the community, not just the parents of the community, and tell them the reasons for important decisions. That's my comment.
Just as a point of clarification, when your work sessions would be public meetings, anytime this board gathers and you have a quorum of members, you must be in a public meeting that is properly advertised. You are not permitted to gather a quorum of members, um, for any reason and not advertise it. So yes, your work sessions would be public.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, your work sessions would be public. That being said, um, the only thing you would really be discussing in your work session are the things on the agenda that you develop. So the agenda, which is usually developed, um, with your superintendent and your board president, just is not here, I mean, not just here in Delanco, but as a matter of course for board members, um, for boards of education everywhere. Um, the agenda is developed between your board president and your superintendent. And if individual board members want a particular topic or issue, they channel that to their board president for inclusion on an agenda. So work sessions are not, you know, freewheeling kind of discussion of anything having to do with education. It's an organized, purposeful meeting with, uh, with a fully developed agenda.
Thank you. So, um, with that being said, if this is the direction we want to go in, we should probably set a schedule for how we'd like to enact this. Um, we had mentioned and Amy had mentioned that, uh, a meeting normally is back to back. Um, two times a month, we have a work session and a voting session. I think, um, Stephen had mentioned maybe a conversation or email. I'm not even sure that he too agree with that format or, or was comfortable with that format as well. And, um, we, I was wondering if the board was interested in the second and third Wednesday of every month or the third and fourth Wednesday of every month. But let's make that decision now and then we can, um, get the dates set so that we can put that, um, in our calendar and that they can be advertised properly.
I'll say that sometimes the second Wednesday is a history board meeting, although let me double check those dates. Uh, and I'm on the Delanco history board, so that would be a conflict. So maybe third, in that case, maybe third and fourth week, but, uh, what do other people think?
I'm fine with the third and fourth. How, where does everyone else stand?
I have a conflict, uh, with the shade tree, which meets fourth Wednesday.
Can hear you, Bob.
Oh, I said, I have a problem. I'm on the shade tree, uh, commission. They meet on the fourth Wednesday.
Um, we could also change the day. Is that correct, Amy? We could have it on a Thursday?
You can have it whatever day you'd like.
Okay. We could modify that to meet everybody's schedule as well. So maybe we would have it on the third and fourth Thursday or the third Thursday and the fourth Wednesday. However, the committee felt it worked best for the majority. What are our thoughts?
We normally, we normally have the second Wednesday for a regular voting meeting, correct?
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so why don't we just keep that? Couldn't we make that the, the work session? And then the voting, because we do the work session, the voting session shouldn't end. Public will hear what goes into the work and then the voting can be, you know, the, the, the voting session, because they both have to be advertised. So it just makes, to me, it just makes sense to keep the second Wednesday, which I know I've already, you know, I have it on my calendar and we've been doing that for years. It used to be the first, we moved from the first to the second Wednesday. So I, to me, the, I can accommodate whatever day that the majority that's in. But I, I think it would be helpful to keep that second Wednesday either for the voting or the work session. And then pick up, you know, whatever day of the week, whatever week of the month people want is, is what I would suggest. So rather than moving to the third and fourth, we know it'll be the second Wednesday and something else.
I'm, I'm in favor.
I'm, I'm finished.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. The, the history board is the first Wednesday. I got confused. So yeah, the second and third Wednesday or other day for the second meeting.
Um, second, third Wednesday is, I'm good with.
I feel like second and third would work fine.
Perfect.
Yeah, that's, uh, I, you just keep it parallel and it makes it easy for everyone, second and third.
Okay. Catherine, how do you feel?
Yeah, those, I'm very flexible.
Awesome. Vince?
You know, my schedule varies. Um, I'll, I'll be able to make most of them, I think.
Awesome. Thanks. Vera?
I'm, I'm flexible. If I really have to cancel for one, I can cancel, but it should be all right.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. We'll decide on the second and third Wednesday of every month. The second Wednesday will be the workshop and the third Wednesday will be the voting session. Thank you.
Sorry, sorry about that. Uh, sorry, Stephen.
Oh, I was just saying, I'm, I'm so glad we could figure this out and I, I look forward to the new format.
Absolutely. Me too.
When, when will we be starting this?
Uh, I was just saying, we can start as early as August 11th and August 18th.
That's fine, that's fine with me.
That's good.
The same time, the seven o'clock. Seven o'clock, six o'clock, whatever.
Not six, don't.
Seven. We're keeping it at seven, uh, unless the board objects to that.
So I will advertise, I will put together, advertise the papers for the second and third Wednesday throughout the entire rest of the remainder of the year. Um, and, um, so I'll do that tomorrow.
Thank you.
The other item, you mentioned it, I just want to make sure we're clear on the actual agenda. Um, we, you're right, Marissa, we did something similar and hadn't, we didn't do committee of the whole. We did a work session before a regular meeting. And you mentioned the agenda. So we could do it a couple of different ways. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. We could basically put it aligned. It says agenda for the third Wednesday of the month, basically, and have that attachment. That was a working document that people can see up until that time, that meeting, with the attachments developing as we get closer, because obviously I don't have all the attachments the second week, the third week. Um, and then put all the other old business, new business discussion items that people come up with in as well. That way we keep the agenda very simple. Um, and the reason why I say that's important for me, because as I put it together, if you do back to back weeks, it's hard to put two agendas back to back, uh, you know, especially if you complicate them. So does that work for everyone? A very simple, just straightforward old business, new business and just an attachment to the agenda for the following week. Does that work?
I think that works for me because it can be an evolving document like you're stating that we will discuss and add to, and you will make those adjustments for that next meeting, but at least we have the template there.
Exactly. Okay. I just want to make sure we're clear before we, because obviously the 11th isn't that far away, actually.
It's right around the corner.
So, um, I mean, if I can just pipe in for what it's worth, um, the districts that I know that do work sessions and voting sessions, and this was my experience as well, is that you weren't actually developing two agendas for meeting one and meeting two. In essence, you developed one agenda, the work session, you work through the agenda. There's a lot of discussion. You put in a lot of time. You flesh out the issues. You tinker at the edges. You refine it. And then by the end of that meeting, it's finalized for meeting two. So when you show up at meeting two, it's literally, everybody just sits down and, and you cast your votes because all your discussion was already had and your agenda was fleshed out. So it, it, just in my experience, you can streamline it as opposed to trying to develop two separate agendas, which can be cumbersome for your BA.
Amy, I appreciate that because now that, now that you said that, we're already doing the second Tuesday of the month anyway. So if we do the same process we've been doing, develop the agenda for the second Tuesday, and then we just simply make the revisions as the board wishes on a Tuesday night for the Wednesday meeting. And that, that makes sense. Does that work? I, I, again, I'm just trying to be clear with the board, what you guys want me to do, uh, so I can do this for next meeting.
Also, if I'm, uh, if I'm not mistaken, the work session, we might have long range things that were, were working on there as well that aren't going to be voted on. We'll have what, you know, the work session for the immediate agenda the following week. But there would, I'm, I'm assuming that there would be, uh, you know, long-term projects that may, you know, take more than just a week to gather the information. And, you know, it could be, you know, whatever length of time it takes. So I think that's, I think there's the two things, Steve. The one is just the ongoing voting info for the coming up meeting the following week. And other would be work that we, that may go on as well, you know, reporting out to the, to everyone here. I'm working on this. Here we are with this. Any input, any ideas? As, and maybe even make that part of how we organize that work session to make it effective and to not cross things up, to stay parallel for the vote, what we're voting on. That is definitely has to take place then. But also if there's other, you know, that would be part B, you know, long, long range things. And that, that may be the first thing we want to get over before we get into. So, but that's a board, I think we can figure that out.
I think that would fall under like new business. That'd be like a new business type thing.
Yeah, like kind of just new business and old business kind of. Old business goes to vote and new business is what we're shaking from the trees to see what information. And some people, you know, some people have more time than others to pursue the work efforts that might be needed on specific projects or long-term things that we're, you know, that we're working on, long-term programs or developing things or whatever it could be. That, that's my suggestion.
Thank you.
Someone else? I think I cut off someone. I don't know.
Who's Catherine?
Um, so I was just curious. So, uh, so the idea would be we keep our second Wednesday meeting. We have a fourth, third Wednesday meeting, which is the one where we actually vote. So we would still be getting the agenda items by the Friday before. Is that right?
Yes, that's exactly why I'm bringing this up. So it looks like to me that's, that's what I'm trying to make sure we're clear on. So I have the right expectation for all of you. So I'm hearing correctly, basically, that's exactly what we'll do. The agenda won't change and then maybe old business, new business is where we would add, maybe just random topics that you want to add. And then if there's any revisions to it, let's pretend we discuss something during the work session. We want to take that off that agenda. We revise it for the rest of the next meeting. So basically, week two versus week three should be identical, except for some minor revisions that you bring up, that the board brings up at that meeting. Does that make sense? But I shouldn't change anything in terms of our process, what I'm used to.
Correct. You would, you would still provide us with the agenda prior to that second Wednesday. We have time to review it and be ready to discuss in our open committee format. We'd make those discussions. We'd make any revisions that are deemed necessary. And then that is what would be, um, followed and voted on, on that third Wednesday.
And as a reminder, that public packet will still go out to the public for that first meeting. So everything that we have read, it will all still go out to public. Nothing will change with that. Um, so just, when I was going to reiterate, everything, everything's been given to you. The first meeting, unless you make the revision, and then the next meeting will really be the same thing, except minus something here and there.
Correct. That sounds like a, a, a good plan.
When we advertise, next question. And Amy, you may want to chime in here. When we advertise, uh, my previous experience, we didn't take action, but if we want to take action, should we advertise saying that we may take action at all meetings, just in case there was some immediate business that we had to take care of?
I think so. And because you'll find as you go along, um, you know, there's always something that comes up. There's always something that needs attention. And it's better just to have yourself covered that you may vote at every meeting, even though your intention is not to vote at the workshop. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. So I mean, I think this is a, a great start in how we're going to move this forward. We have a time to start, a start date. We have an idea of how it's going to, you know, present itself that evening. And I think that once we get that process started, we'll be able to fine tune all the little things so that we can make it a really productive evening that we discuss a lot of items. And then we're able to vote on them quite easily the following Wednesday. So I'm really excited about it and I'm really thankful that everybody is on board to do this. And I think that it's really going to help open the lines of communication and the, um, the trust between us all. So I think that's great and I appreciate everybody, um, doing this. So thank you. I appreciate that. If there's nothing for-
I just hope that we're able. Yeah, I just, we're able to just focus on the issues and the problems and not on each other. I think that will help us go a long way. And I think we're, tonight demonstrates that we're capable of it. So now we just have to do it.
Very true. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I agree. All right. So now we go back and go on to the additional item in old business, the discussion of format for the BOE meetings, in-person, virtual and hybrid. Again, this was brought up previously, but we are going deeper into this one as well. So let's open this up for discussion, please.
I'm in favor of going back to public meetings. Simple as that.
Uh, I would much prefer to stay with Zoom, um, partly because it's convenient. You know, I'm a parent, I have a two-year-old, uh, it's convenient to do it from home. We've all gotten used to this format. We can hear each other well. We don't have to troubleshoot new technical issues. Um, and it just seems like preferable to me. So I would rather stay.
My number one preference is Zoom. If, um, if some people on the board think for some reason that's too weird or whatever, we could do a hybrid and since the teachers, they could handle kids at home, kids in the classroom. The most important thing is people have to take turns talking and mute themselves. You know, if, if, uh, third graders can do it, I think we could do it. So my second choice would be the, the hybrid Zoom where we have the laptops in front of us and, um, but we're in person. But my first choice is with Steve.
Thank you. And I appreciate that. And I think that's a great parlay into, um, Albert perhaps speaking on how this will impact the board and what we can expect if we decide to go in that route specifically. So I appreciate that. Albert, did you want to speak?
Yes, um, so going back, you know, in public sessions would cost the district no money. Um, if you guys decide to go to virtual route, um, we will have to, you know, pay for a Zoom license. Um, and if we choose hybrid, that will also cost money as well. And I feel like any solution we, you know, put out there, I feel like it will probably cause more problems than solutions. Uh, but we can do a hybrid, but I just, I feel like it won't be a clean setup. Like, you know, like Steve made a good point last meeting about the audio and, um, if you guys had to pick anything, in my opinion, I would just go between public or all virtual. So that's my opinion.
Um, Albert, would we need to pay for Google Meet?
Google Meets?
That's what we used, um, for classes when we had kids at home, kids in school. At the same time, we had children logging on from home.
Google Meet is free. The only problem with Google Meets is if you want outside sources to come in, like, uh, it gets complicated. But if everyone were like in district, Google Meet would be fine.
What do you mean outside sources?
Like, like how we're doing Zoom right now. I need anybody coming in. It, it gets complicated with Google Meets.
But I had children logging in from the Dominican Republic on Google Meet into my class. So I don't see why, why is that difficult? They just need the, um, the, the, uh, the link. That's all they need. So what, so why is that difficult?
There's, there's different roles with Google Meets. Um, we can talk about it, you know, behind the scenes if you need, but that's why Google Meets like was not a major thing during the pandemic. You, everyone was using Zoom because Google Meets have certain limitations that Zoom, um, does better in, so.
Well, that's interesting. Hamilton, you know, three high schools, three middle schools, they were, they decided not to do Zoom because they thought it was less secure. So that's why we did Google Meet for everything.
Yeah, I'll just give you my opinion. Uh, we don't need to have a debate on it. Um, but it's ultimately what the board decides, so.
I think the money, I think the Zoom subscription is relatively affordable. I mean, that, that we have 36 people on here now, including the, the board. So there's a lot of benefit to the community and everyone already knows how to use them. So, so to me, I'm, I'm fine with sticking with Zoom.
How, how much is the license? And don't we have licenses already? How, how much is the license? And don't we have licenses already?
No, we're, right now we're using more sounds license and they are ending their Zoom subscription um, in August because they're going back in person for their board meetings. So they don't really need to use Zoom anymore. Especially the school year, everyone's back in person. So virtual isn't really, you know, a thing, uh, for next school year.
And we would, if I'm not mistaken, we would have to change your, your policy because it's in there about only two, two people at a time being, am I correct with that? Two people at a time being able to be virtual? Because that was put in a couple of years ago before all this took place.
That is correct.
I can throw this out there just to have put a number on it. Uh, for up to one hundred percent participants, uh, Zoom Pro account is a hundred and forty-nine dollars per year. But that's, you know, twelve some dollars per month, which to me seems pretty affordable.
I think the cost is negligible. Albert and I talked about this. Actually, the, the one thing that, that I said to Albert was, you know, come with your experience because he's going to be the one that has to carry this out, right? So if you were to have, if he were to have to carry out Zoom meetings, that, that's kind of easy, second nature now for him. Same thing for in-person, uh, would be very minimal for Albert. But the hybrid, I think, based on what Albert is saying, presents a challenge because I do wonder about hybrid. I, I think it's a good idea in a certain sense. But then at the same time, I have to wonder, you know, if we're gonna, um, be there. So Marissa, you, you were there during that interview where we all had our laptops out. And we had to turn the sound down. We had to mute ourselves. And otherwise, you're hearing my voice over six computers, you know, and same thing would happen. During the board meeting where we have nine elected board members, two administrators, so eleven computers out there. So the sound, you know, could present a challenge because nobody's perfect and, and we're going to have people that forget to mute or forget to turn the sound down, et cetera. But that, I think that's one challenge. But then there's also the question of who's participating from the public? Is it virtual? Is it in person? Is it both? So I mean, it's, it is, I'm not saying that it's impossible. I'm saying that if we want a streamlined approach, I, I don't see hybrid being that. I, I see it being more streamlined if we had one or the other.
Can, can I offer two things if that's okay? Um, not, and one of my clients is Pine Hill School District and they've been doing, um, hybrid since they started bringing their board numbers back up regularly at their board meetings. And what we do is they, we have the board rooms set up and everybody sits in their regular seats. Um, but if you want to participate in hybrid, uh, and there's a single camera that picks up the room and a single micro, well, and microphones that pick up our voices. So that there, you don't have the problem of everyone being on their own laptop. Um, and it's projected onto a screen and we can see everyone who's calling in and participating via Zoom. But instead of having individual laptops and dealing with the sound issue, because like Joe, I've had that experience and it's a terrible experience. And it's a, it's, it's just, it made for often meetings. Um, the experience at Pine Hill with the single camera focusing on the whole room seems to work well for them.
I, I could see that there's a possibility, you know, under the right conditions, I could see that working. I would say that the, the gym at Pearson School is, uh, it's acoustically compromised. I mean, it's, it's an echoey room and it's pretty tough to get nine, you know, nine board members plus, you know, so maybe eleven people. You know, all picked up by the same microphone. Um, I think, you know, we, we did a few meetings. I mean, the school board streamed some meetings over YouTube about a year ago and it was not very successful. It was very, very hard to hear. Um, so I'm a little skeptical that we can all, if, if we had a, you know, a nicely acoustically treated room, I think that could work with one mic if we were all around a conference table. But the way, the meetings have been set up in the past, I'm skeptical of that. Uh, but thank you for, I thought it works out somewhere.
Thank you. I, I'm all for going back in-person. Again, I will use the same argument that I used previously. We have a portion of our meeting during the voting session that is regarding student recognition. I think that it's very important that we do that in person. I think the children and the parents, um, enjoy it and they gain a lot from it as well. I also think that in-person is also acceptable in terms of if we're asking the students and teachers to go back in person, we can do the same. And I think that it would be just as seamless to be in-person as it would be in any other, you know, form, if not more. And again, the benefit of having the children and their recognition in-person is a priceless gift.
I agree with you, Marissa. I think in-person would be the way to go. But I do notice we have significantly more participation from parents and everyone being able to watch. So if we, if the school board itself was back in person and we had the ability for the public to watch, you know, remotely, I think that would be a good compromise on both. But I do think that we as a school board should be sitting there in the meeting.
I think so too. And you know, and I, and I think a little bit, you know, we have the student recognition, which I think is an awesome thing. People did show up to that. Quite a bit of people showed up to that. And then they chose to leave for the meeting, understandably. But there's that option. They can stay. And we always offer that and open that up to the public. So I mean, the people do come out. You know, I don't think that that's the biggest hindrance is having an in-person, uh, session. The parents do come out because they want to support their children um, and do it in a public way. And I think that they would, in turn, now that I think that there's a desire to be more involved, I, I truly hope that the more people will stay, more people will stay for the meetings and be involved. I think that would be an awesome, um, and great gift to our community. That if, you know, more people come to the meetings and interact and, you know, are involved and can spread the word, I think that's phenomenal. And then we're doing not only a service for our community, but to our students as well by providing them that in-person recognition. And for the community to also receive their information firsthand.
Um, so I feel, you know,
There's so much positivity back there.
Um, I just wanted to say like the, the frustration that you felt like during the interviews, you said there was problem with sound and muting. It was very stressful. That's a little taste of what the teachers had to go through. Except they had a lot of kids doing it too. So, um, I still think, you know, if, if the majority, we always have our five-four split, if the majority wants to be in-person, let's at least try to get used to what the teachers had to do from the get-go. That's better than the, you know, let's just try. If it doesn't work, maybe we'll have to do like what Amy was suggesting and try to improve the sound, but somehow we have to have some virtual element.
Yeah. What about?
Sorry.
Sorry, Bob.
Uh, what session, uh, would be, uh, via Zoom and the, uh, second one would be in-person?
Bob, I've been thinking the same thing for about five minutes. If we're going to do most of the the major deliberation and the stuff we want the public to see, because that was the main thing with all this, uh, at the work session, then if we have that over Zoom, that would be advantageous. And then we have the in-person meeting where if we need to talk about anything in executive, which I imagine would still happen at the approval meeting, then we can do all that in-person. So that, that seems like a, I, I'd say a pretty decent compromise, if anything.
I, I think that's actually a great idea because that, then that will enable our student recognition to be in-person because that would be during our voting session and then the work shop workshop session could then be virtual, which will enable us to all be involved and the community to be present for as well. I, I do think that's a compromise. I don't know how everyone else feels.
That's a good compromise as long as, um, the voting session, even if the, um, the sound is a little off, maybe we do what Amy was describing with the, the camera away, you know, catching everyone. Because there's still, um, there, there's still an advantage to having that as a recorded meeting. But, um, but I, I like the idea that, um, Mr. Dovia and Cameron are bringing up.
Yeah, I, I agree with Vera. It's, as long as the, as long as we can do a stream of the voting session, um, which, you know, should be doable, even if it's not perfect. As long as we can stream that, then I'm okay with that.
Steven McLaughlin, I nominate you to help us with that.
Sounds good. I would love to run some tests.
The court, the courtroom in Delanco, they use, uh, camera and they have, uh, set up there that, uh, you know, covers the courtroom. So, you know, that, that might be something to look at to see what their setup is. It's probably something to state is, uh, has got specs on and so forth. Cause, uh, but it seems to work for the courts.
Well, the big difference over there is that they have carpet. So it's acoustically a little less challenging.
Also, the, the township committee is not something I reported on in my liaison report, but they are spending money or planning to spend money. They've earmarked money to go to a hybrid model at some point in the future. So they're going to be installing, um, audio and recording equipment that we could look into.
Yeah, they're working on the whole acoustic. They're spending a lot of money on the acoustics of the room too, I believe.
They are, yes.
I, I wonder if we could, I wonder if we could borrow their meeting space if that, you know, if and when that, uh, gets set up, gets, gets running.
I'm sure they would be agreeable to that.
That's interesting.
Conflict, uh, you know, with other, uh, meetings that they have.
Yeah, their meetings are on Mondays, so it shouldn't be an issue.
There are other groups that use-
Right, other groups, yes, of course.
And they do court from there. But it's worth looking at too.
Definitely worth exploring. I think that's a good point too.
So Marissa or Mrs. Cameron again, I just want to emphasize because Ms. Darmo said that teachers experienced frustration with the, the hybrid model. And I totally understand that. You know, I mean, that was a year and a half worth of virtual, hybrid, in-person. I mean, there, there were so many different things going on. And I appreciate what the teachers had, had done over that time. However, it's important to note that, that the standing mandate right now is that we will be in-person for instruction in September, uh, for students and staff. So the expectation for staff and students, as you, you said, Mrs. Cameron again, is to be in-person. But I actually really appreciate this idea of balancing the different needs by having the work session be virtual um, and having the regular public session be in-person. I think that's a great idea.
I do too. And I think if everybody's agreeable to it, I think it's a great direction to go in because it provides a little bit of what both, you know, all sides really would like. And at the same time, it provides the students with that opportunity to gain their recognition in-person as well. Is that, does, do the board members feel comfortable with that direction of work session as a virtual platform? And the voting session as an in-person platform?
Yeah, as long as in-person is streamed.
Um, that's not in-person.
You go in person, but you also have it on video, just as a record.
It's a problem.
What would be the, um, the regulations around wearing a mask at a in-person meeting?
Right now, we're told that, uh, as long as you're vaccinated, that masks are optional. But that, that could change in, in the next six weeks. Not sure. But that's, that's what we were just told recently.
So we would follow the, the county mask mandate then?
Yeah, but it's optional. I mean, I, if I'm in person, I, you know, at my age, I'm going to wear a mask. Um, I just prefer, I've been vaccinated. I, you know, I just would prefer. And if I feel comfortable, I'll take it off. If I don't, I'll keep it on. That's a, that's a bit of a different issue in a way. The other thing is if we're going to be doing, like I pointed out before, what we have, um, we'd have to change our policy. You know, that, however, we need to in order to make that work.
Well, how difficult?
We're going to do.
How difficult is that going to be? Is that something we can do immediately?
We can suspend.
I would think so.
We can suspend the immediate directive that's in the policy from my understanding and then vote on a new one. I believe that, that we, uh, mentioned that at the last meeting. So we-
Yeah, and we did that, we did that originally in order to be able to be doing everything virtually. We suspended it.
I, uh, can I make a motion that we suspend existing policy?
Well, we do, we also have a public law that's still in effect that supersedes those policies that states that we are required to provide certain things virtually, right? So like if we were to have a virtual meeting like this one, uh, it stipulates those requirements. So our policies say nothing about that, but there, there are, there's a public law that exists about that.
I think we need to be careful and Amy might be able to tell us how to parse this with the language. Because if we say we're suspending it, then technically the, the, uh, second meeting where we're in-person, the way it is now, only two people could do it. We suspend that, then anyone who wanted to be virtual could be virtual. That's what I'm saying. The language, the, how it, it would have to be changed if we, you know, what our intentions and what the law is, is something different. Or the, what we have on a book, so.
The law deals with, um, public, I mean, this is a public meeting and whether you're a school board or a municipality or any other kind of public entity, there are rules about making, about how you do your business in public, what you do in executive, how, um, the public access to it and the right of the public to comment on certain items before you actually vote. So the law deals with those kinds of things. Now, when it comes to, and it deals with whether or not you can be virtual or not. But, but if you already voted to suspend your poli- policy, presumably at the beginning of the pandemic, when you first went virtual, um, that remains in effect. What I would suggest is, what I would suggest is if you're planning to move to this new hybrid model and now you have some experience with being online and you know the pros and cons and the things you want to work out, let's revise your policy. Um, and that can be one of your, uh, first discussion items, um, when you move to committee of the whole. Uh, and I'm happy, I don't know if Joe has already approached this with my colleagues, sometimes he's or not, but I would be happy to work with Joe on developing your policy draft, um, that now addresses your new normal.
And as far as what is in our policy now, it's within like part of a sentence that only, that would need to be changed. Because we limited it instead of, we said only two people at a time. Just taking that out, basically, I would think, as far as what's in our policy.
There's a whole-
Talking about is beyond.
Yeah, I haven't actually read your policy, so I can't comment on it specifically. But, um, you know, you, you now, you have experience with virtual meetings now. There could be other things based on that experience you want to do to enhance your policy.
It's more than a sentence that needs to be changed, I think, because there's a whole request process, approval denying by, voted by the board. I mean, it's very, it's pretty long, so.
Yeah, but I, if you look at it, it just limits it to only two.
But I think that we would want to achieve this voting part of it.
Yeah, yeah.
We've just ignored the policy for a year and a half, so I, I, I think that we'll be okay. Uh, we will be okay. And because that policy just hasn't been applicable for a year and a half. So I, I think we'll be fine going through a process of changing what that looks like. Um.
Can I jump in real quick? I hope you can get confirmation on one thing. Are we going to, I, I want to make sure that, just to confirm that we're going to stream the voting sessions. That those are, I'm not sure about hybrid. I'm not sure about taking public's, you know, comments from the public, but at the very least doing a, a live stream. I think would be important just to, just to include the community and get things on the record.
Steve, I agree with you and I think what we did before was an okay setup. But the reason I said maybe we should have you help us is because you had a different type of setup with a different piece of equipment that I think was better than the equipment we had. We, we had no, I mean, that we purchased to record video or, or live stream a video. So I feel like the live streaming allows for the public to at least view the proceedings. It does doesn't necessarily let them participate, right? But they see what's going on and hear what's going on. But then it's recorded and we put it up on the, the, um, the website. Albert's been doing that. So, I mean, I, I would fully support that. I feel like we've been talking about transparency for a while now. There is no reason that, that, you know, that, there's nothing to prevent us from doing that with the exception of, do we have the equipment to make it happen?
Yeah, I'm happy. You know, what, what you had, what you used last time as a baseline is inadequate. And I would love to help and maybe we can get some, you know, get something that sounds a little better. But, but, you know, what you had last time would be adequate if nothing else comes through. But do, what do other board members think? Um, can I get some, can I confirm that we can, that we're going to stream this?
Sure.
Second meeting, the votes.
I think that we should, absolutely.
Okay. Great, thank you.
And I see Cameron shaking his head as well. He was in agreement, but now he's provided a thumbs up. But yes, I think that, yeah, and Bob would agree. So I think that that's a, a great idea. Of course, that should be, um, streamed and people can see things in real time and be present as, as we hope that they would virtually. So I think that that's a great idea. Okay. So I think that we have a good directive there. I think that, um, it was a great compromise and I appreciate the board working together to come to that compromise. And I think because of that, we're going to have really good, um, meetings that are productive again. So I'm excited for that. And I think because of that, we're going to have really good um, meetings that are productive again. So I'm excited for that. So when August eleventh. And then, so the only thing I just wanted to like, I guess, bring up is uh, if a board member, so on our current policy, you have to like request five days ahead of time, whatever. Um, I know we're not, we haven't been following that, but just like what would be the process if a board member did want to go virtual for said meeting? And/or can we make it sort of an uh, agreement among, amongst ourselves that if we're feeling sick, we wouldn't show up to the in-person meeting? I think that's a valid point to bring up. Certainly, we would not want anyone to come if they were feeling ill, um, considering our current climate. I think that, I mean, and sometimes that uh, feeling of illness doesn't happen five days prior to a meeting. So I think that that seems, it's acceptable to be able to provide that notice once you feel the way that you feel. I don't know how the majority feels. Also, of course, we would need to have a quorum present um, at our in-person voting session. So that would be something we need to think about. We can't have everybody obviously being sick or we'd have to change it to a virtual aspect, I guess. I don't really know. That's certainly something we do need to um, massage a little bit more to find out how we would handle situations like that. So you're saying that if uh, so you're saying, so there's nine of us. If five people said that they wanted to do it virtually and four people are meeting in person, that we don't have a quorum? Not considering we're, we're voting on having or we're deciding to have an in-person voting session. It would still be a quorum if, if we decide to do it half virtual, half not, but we'd have to make a decision on how it's presented. Because what we're deciding is that our vote, voting session will be in-person and not. Right. Okay. So, but is there a way to say that people who are participating virtually or not are participating in the quorum? Like how to, how does that conversation happen?
No, no, they, they, you'd still be a participant under the policy. However, however, uh, executive session would not be open to that person on the policy. You know, and that's, that's another item that would need to be figured out. So I feel like, you know, that, those are the things that Marissa is mentioning that I think need to be worked out at some point. But I guess the question is, are we gonna work them out when we come to that river and, and have to build the bridge at that point? Or are we doing it? Are we doing it now?
Yeah, do, should we talk about it on the 11th at our first work session? Or do we talk about it? I, I think that's a great idea. I think that's the perfect opportunity to start talking about the issues. We can put that on. I guess that would be considered old business because we're discussing it and we can talk about it then and dig deeper into how we would handle that. I think in the meantime, we can probably all think about how we envision that to happen and then bring it to the table when we bring that uh, topic up. Sounds good. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, um, does anybody else have anything else to um, provide for the old business? If not, I will move this on to new business. And there is nothing in new business that I see on the agenda currently.
Um, I have something for, to comment on. Um, I'm, you know, my, my new business from before had to do with the long-range facilities plan. I didn't go over the, the past agendas yet to look for the Garrison Architects Report, which is in there somewhere. But when I was just reviewing the um, Department of Ed site, I think we have to, if there, I guess if there's a change in the long-range facility plan, it has to be done every five years. Or I'm not sure if it has to be reviewed every five years. But um, the board needs to be aware of what the current plan is. So I hope at some point we can dig that up and look at it and, you know, s- see what's in it, see if we want to vote to change anything. And the second thing is no disrespect to Mrs. uh, Ms. Garen, but I think we do need some policy on um, when we need a lawyer present because lawyers are expensive. And being as that, we don't have any clubs, we don't have any after-school activities for the kids, we have to be penny pinchers. So I just wanted to mention that.
I don't think that we have to be penny pinchers. We, we have to be spending our money wisely, is my take on it. And you have to spend and, and um,
For me, penny pincher is spending it wisely.
Expenses, not necessarily if you're pinching when you need to open the purse strings sometimes. That's, is my interpretation of beyond literal, figurative interpretation of that. And I don't want to get in, get us off on tangents, but I think, in fact, you know, sometimes people have to understand that doing business, especially people that haven't been in business, it's not like running your own household. It's a very different, there's different ways that it, that it operates. You know, and um, also I think to be responsible, you know, it depends on what you think penny pinching is. I mean, we, we each have our own level that we think is, oh, we spent too much for this as opposed to that. And some of it, honestly, is that's why we're elected board. And we have a, a CSA, our superintendent, and we have a VABS. And those folks are doing that for us. They're doing that, that work and saying, hey, we have to spend here, not there. And it's good to have, have a lawyer at a meeting when we need a lawyer, our lawyer to meeting and our lawyer to also interject when any board member is um, yes, presenting information that's not legally applicable, as if it were. That that's, I think, important for whoever is doing it, because otherwise, you know, we all are, we all can be trial lawyers very easily. And uh, you know, it's, it's interpretative. So um, we're okay, I, you know, and there's gonna be money coming, you know. This has been, you know, I feel like I've been the messenger for a year and a half and that's what I, telling the people above me, I'd say, hey, when is the money coming? You know, I've been telling people a year and a half. And I think with the reopening of schools, we're gonna be seeing that money coming in from, was it S2? And there's gonna be other monies that are available. And we have to be aggressive in going out and trying to get that money to utilize to better our schools. That's my take on it.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm up on a farm. I'm a, I'm a fiscal conservative. You use everything, you reuse it. That's not the issue. It's the issue with spending it wisely. And something I had to learn in being an educator because if I applied my penny pinching, you know, I had to learn that y- you can't run a business doing that. You can't expand, you can't get what you need when you need it. If you have a pre-gone conclusion that I can't spend money, or it's not wisely spent. And that's my, that's my take on it, so.
Thank you.
Been in a number of educational settings, public, private, so.
Thank you. I'm, I'm positively optimistic that as we move forward with the committee of the whole and the separate voting session, that we will see things in a, in a, with more fresh, you know, with a fresh, uh, fresh outlook. I think that things will be handled differently and I'm hopeful that it won't necessarily be mandatory that we have somebody here to kind of keep us in line. So I'm super excited to, to see the future go in that direction. And I'm hopeful that it happens sooner than later. So I think we just have to play it by ear and see how things go moving forward. And once we do, we can make those decisions as we see fit.
And I think it's great that Amy Aaron has experience as a school board member and also with what we're trying to move to. That's gonna be helpful. You know, you, you, what I learned over the years is you need help when you need it. That's when you gotta get it. And we need help right now, so. The old penny wise, pound foolish, so.
Thank you.
A lot of good people entering into what we're doing here in Delanco. So they need to be able to, to help us. That's what their role is, to help the board, help the administration, the, you know, the superintendent, the board secretary and, and be supportive of our administration and our teacher. You know, it's a, it's a total community effort, so.
Thank you.
Enough for me.
Thank you, Harry. I appreciate that. Thank you.
So, Marissa, I just wanted to say for the sake of the board and for the sake of the public, that we certainly do not uh, ask for any kind of legal counsel in a haphazard or arbitrary way. Uh, when we ask for the support of legal counsel, it's for a good reason. And uh, our board policy does authorize me, Stephen Burns, or someone that I designate to work with our legal counsel on different issues and topics, including uh, what, what Harry was just mentioning and what you were just mentioning related to the board transitioning to a different model and, and those sorts of things. So it's um, absolutely important for us to have our solicitor present, at least right now. Like you said, it doesn't mean that it's every meeting for the rest of time. It just, that's, that is the recommendation right now.
Correct. Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else in new business and distributions are all out, as I believe they are, I will open this up for po- public comment on non-agenda items. And I will read the first one that I have received. We've received it um, in the virtual um, forum. And this one is from Mr. David Archer, 700 Chestnut Street in Delanco. And he wanted to make the comment that my kids, oh, let me see, um, Joe, can you jump to the cell right above that just so I can read it? Because your, your name is covering. Okay, thank you. My kids will not be wearing a mask in school. It's very unhealthy for children to wear them all day. And I wanted to know if you all are going to teach critical race theory, because if so, my children will walk out of class as I've told them to do. So I just wanted that put out there. Thank you for your comment. Um, Gregory's iPhone, you have your hand up if you'd like to speak?
Hi, yeah, I, I apologize. I was about 10 minutes late. I have a complimentary um, thing I wanted to mention on an agenda item. Is that okay?
Yes, please.
So I'm from, I live at fourteen Timid Circle. So I just wanted to mention on the um, replacing the principals. Um, I thought it was awesome what, how the, how Mr. Mersinger handled it. Um, you were able to get, you know, the community involved, you were able to get the teachers involved. Um, I was one of the ones that was actually involved in the interviews. Um, so I, I appreciate, you know, being able to, to do that. But, you know, in the expedited timeframe that, that the school faced, um, I think we got two fantastic candidates. Um, I think Barry and John are gonna do amazing jobs. And I'm really looking forward to, you know, my daughter going through the, going through, you know, um, elementary and middle school with both of these principals. Um, they have big shoes to fill with Mr. Conte and Miss Noble, but, you know, I think they're gonna do exceptional jobs, sensational jobs and really looking forward to that. Um, the other comment I wanted to make that's on non-agenda item was, I do encourage all the parents on here. You know, if you ever have issues, you know, I see it a lot. And one of the worst ways to, you know, impact the community negatively is when you have a problem with something with the school, come to Mr. Mersinger. Like, come to him first if you have a problem. He will get you to the right people, the people that can give you the right information. I think a lot of times we do ourselves a disservice as a community by putting it on Facebook, social media, whatever, and it just starts a war. Um, so I encourage everybody, in the future, you have a problem, like, go, go to Mr. Mersinger. You know, that's what he's there for. Um, you know, and we've had problems in the past. And instead of putting it on social media, I go to him for something and he gets me to the right person that can get me the right information. Um, so I appreciate it if everybody can do that in the future. And uh, thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Uh, Mrs. Cameron again, if I might make a non-agenda item comment.
You may.
I'm not a member of the public, but thank you, Mr. Foley. I, I did want to take a moment for anyone who's here. If you participated in the principal interview process, whether you're a parent or a staff member, I truly appreciate everything that you did to help with that process. As Mr. Foley said, it was very expedited. You know, the, it, i- if it were uh, happening, let's say in March or April, of course, we would, we would take more time. We would visit someone's school. We would do all these things. But that's not what can happen in July. So, you know, we were, we were able to go through an expedited process and find two amazing candidates in John and Barry. And so I, I just wanted to praise and, and thank everyone who was involved in that. So, and, and again, um, Mrs. Cameron again, I appreciate what Mr. Foley just said there, that I had a few parents reach out to me recently about a topic. And I'm glad that they came to me, not because I have all the answers to everything under the sun. It's because, as Mr. Foley said, I could either respond with what I know or get them to the right person on our team that can help them. And uh, so for example, just so that the board is aware and so that the public is aware, I've received some questions about extracurriculars and athletics at Walnut. That's something that Mr. Calligwar brought up earlier in this meeting. Uh, and the answer that I'm giving to everyone right now is uh, we only budgeted for drama club for Walnut. And this is something that was discussed for months as, as part of the budget process, the Budget and Finance Committee, the full board, me, uh, Vicky LaSalle. And, and it's, it's a tough decision to not budget for those items. But at the same time, I didn't want to make a big announcement and say, well, we're not going to have extracurriculars except drama. What I wanted to do was wait and see what's happening with the funding. We have ARP funding that we still need to analyze and see what, what can we do with that money. We also have some, some possible community-based funding that could help us with the extracurriculars, uh, including athletics. So these are things that I am working on behind the scenes, which is why I wouldn't just make that announcement. But for the time being, the only budgeted item is drama club for Walnut. That does not mean that for the entire school year, that will be the only budgeted item. It's just a matter of us working on it. Uh, it's important for everybody to remember that this past year's budget uh, caused a rift, a reduction in force of multiple staff members. Uh, and so it's, it, it was a very, very tough budget year. But again, we're receiving that funding. We need to look at how it can be used and see what we have missed. We have Steve, Stephen Burns here now. Uh, and I'm gonna rely on him as a BA. And, and what can we do? Can we shift things around into different accounts and make it work with that funding that we're receiving? To see what we can do for extracurriculars. So I, I, I at least want to give, again, that glimmer of hope to everyone that even though certain things were not budgeted for, uh, that does not mean that's the end of that story. Uh, we're still working on.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other public comments on agenda items? I don't see anybody else with their hand up. I've gone back and forth. So I will close that. And now, um, it seems as though we do have a need to go into executive session regarding the discussion of the CSA evaluation for 2020, 2021. So I'm thinking that um, at eight thirty-one, the board, um, I will, we will go into executive session for approximately no more than an hour. And I'm hopeful less. And um, I need a motion to go into executive session.
Motion.
Thank you, Stephen. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Steve? Okay, the motion carries. We will now click the link for executive session. We'll leave this one, go into executive session and return it in one hour, which will be approximately nine thirty, if not sooner. Thank you so much. Okay, um, we had a member of the board leave during executive, so I don't know if he'll return for the regular meeting. My guess is he won't know when it started, but just to give you a heads up. Um, at this point in time, I'm requesting a motion to accept and approve the CSA evaluation as discussed in executive session and, and a motion to direct the board president to amend the current document.
I make the motion.
Thank you, Phil. I need a second.
Got that.
Thank you. Um, questions and comments?
Uh, we cannot comment on this, correct?
Correct, it's just part of, I have to just say that.
Oh, sorry, this is a reevaluation, but we cannot comment.
Oh wait, dear, I, I already gave the motion. Thank you.
Who's the second? I'm sorry, Mercy. Who's the second?
Um, Robert Doby.
I did, Cameron.
Oh, you did? Say?
Sorry, can, I, I don't hear your voices yet. I'm sorry.
All right, so I'm sorry, that was Cameron Jenkins, and that's my fault. Cameron, okay. Would this have to be a roll call vote, Amy? Because it's regarding, yes. I'll, you need a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Calligwar?
He's not present.
Ms. Darmo?
I vote no.
Mr. Doby? Mr. Doby?
Bob.
Can't hear you.
You're on mute, Bob.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Cameron Jenkins?
Yeah.
Mr. Phil Jenkins?
Yes.
Ms. Karen Menugian?
Yes.
Mr. Niewak?
You're on mute, Harry.
You're on mute, Harry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Although, yes.
Mr. Tersich Kuehl?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I make a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Everyone seconds it.
Okay, we'll go with Mr. Dobie for the motion and Cameron Jenkins for the second. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. We adjourn the meeting. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.